At this time, I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held Monday evening, January 7th, 2019. Happy New Year, everybody. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Happy New Year.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Todd Cornes if he would lead us in tonight's invocation for the meeting.
Gladly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bless the Lord. Father, we do pause just for a moment before we get into the business of the day, just to say thanks for the good things you provided and the way you provide them, and just to show gratitude. And then, as we move forward in the business of our town, of our community, we ask for your continued blessings and providence to help us prosper, to help us grow in goodness, kindness, and mercy, to let us be a place that's pleasing to you and that excels in that which is right. And in order to do all that, Father, we'll definitely need your wisdom, your power, and your grace. We ask for all of that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Cornes. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Baker if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Steve. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session for this evening. Tonight's executive session had two legal issues, an issue regarding pending litigation and advice regarding agenda items. We had one contractual issue, it was a downtown economic development issue, and we had one routine personnel matter. No vote was taken in tonight's executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
Settled.
Councilmember Lyle and Councilmember Manus, second set motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Tonight's agenda, are there any deletions of any items on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move right into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes from the council meeting on December 3rd, 2018 were provided in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to council meeting December 3rd, 2018? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Settled.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes, second set motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Steve Baker. Proclamation, January 20 to 26th, 2019, as School Choice Week. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proclamation is to be mailed to the National School Choice Week in Mission Viejo, California. Proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring January 20 to 26th, 2019, as School Choice Week in the Town of Lexington. Whereas, all children in the Town of Lexington should have access to the highest quality education possible; and whereas, the Town of Lexington recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Lexington to be successful adults; and whereas, quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Lexington; and whereas, the Town of Lexington is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home; and whereas, educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community; and whereas, the Town of Lexington has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children; and whereas, School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington that January 20 to 26th, 2019, is Lexington School Choice Week, and all citizens are urged to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Proclaim the 7th day of January 2019, Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good, Mr. Baker. Thank you. I believe that one will be mailed out in the next coming week. Our next presentation from this evening is from Chief Terrence Green.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Happy New Year, Town of Lexington. Tonight, we want to kind of recognize one of our diligent workers, and one of my favorite workers, because I didn't ever have to pay him. And he also was one of my favorite workers. He never complained, so I didn't have to pay him, didn't have to provide benefits, and he never complained, so great officer. So I would like to, if I could have a reserve, I guess I could say retired Reserve Sergeant Rivers to hold him with me. Just a few notes about Sergeant Rivers. He has worked with us for 11 years, making him the longest reserve officer ever with the Lexington Police Department. And just looking over his resume, we promoted him to the rank of Sergeant in 2006, and if we count just the minimal basic hours that he had to provide for the Town of Lexington, we calculated that just minimum, it was over 2,640 hours for the Town of Lexington at no cost. He's a hometown boy, graduated from Lexington High School in 1988. He graduated from USC in 1992 in criminal justice from USC. He began serving in law enforcement with the Lexington County Sheriff's Department in 1992, but in 1998, he began teaching at the Lexington Technology Center. He's married to his wife, Kim, 23 years. They had one son who's currently stationed in an Air Force Base in Oklahoma. Also, he decided to join the National Guard in 2009, so he really is giving back to his community. So we want to kind of just show a token appreciation from us, Mayor, if you come down. We have made him a shadow box. This is a small token appreciation we wanted to give to him for the 11 years. He came to us right after I became chief, and we were in the rebuilding mode, so it did mean a lot for you to come and help us during that time. So we want to present you your badges that you wore while you're here. It's your reserve badge, your sergeant badge, and also one of our challenge comment.
Thanks, Chief.
We want to present this real life gift. That's awesome, man. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, go to my phone, listen to hear from him.
Didn't realize I was going to have to speak this evening, but I do want to thank Chief Green. It's been an honor and a privilege to work for an outstanding department. I told him when I first thought about being in the reserve, I put my application packet together, and I was talking to my wife, and I said, "I think I'm going to take this down tomorrow evening." Unfortunately, that's the same time period the previous chief had his legal issues, so I said, "I think I'm just going to put this on hold for a little bit." It's been an honor and a privilege to work for the town. It's, can't think of a better place to work. I've spent some years with the Sheriff's Department, great department over there, but the Town Police Department, Town of Lexington's a great department, and I appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you so much. And thank you very much for what you did for our community. Our last presentation this evening is from Chief Terrence Green. I'm not going to spoil it, and I'll let you do it, Chief.
Each year, members of the Lexington Police Department choose one of his own. We share the characteristics of the Inspector Awkish. Inspector Rich was an exceptional, invaluable, dedicated employee at the Town of Lexington. He was always diligent to his call of duty and always kept a positive attitude despite his lengthy, difficult battle with cancer. The Lexington Police Department Awkish Award of the Year goes to Officer Klenzick. Officer Klenzick has worked with the Lexington Police Department since 2014, and her colleagues share these words about her. One said I would like to nominate Jen Klenzick, Officer of the Year Award for 2018, as she has been completely focused on the mission of Lexington Police Department in building partnership with the community we serve and her community action team to a greater effect. For nearly two years, Officer Klenzick has worked with the community action team and used that experience not only to learn the duties of that position, but taking care, careful consideration of our relationship with the organization outside the Lexington Police Department, and has extended our involvement and support of them in many ways. For example, she put out a goal this year. She came to me and she said, "We're going to raise $25,000 for special limits." I'm like, "Yeah, right." In my head, I didn't say that. I'm like, "Go, girl," you know? She surprised that. She raised $33,000. $250 for special limits. And it was with the great citizen of Town of Lexington, it was with her who were beating that drum, with coops, cops on the coops, no shade, no November, and December. She knows how I feel about that. But this reach out to people all over our state, and just to say that she did that, she initiated us. She put us in the area that we never went, and it's because of her determination. She also took the lead in our Dr. Cop Festival, and this was one of the largest ever that we ever had. And we heard soon we raised about that, we were able to raise over $7,000 for our Dr. Cop program. She works for our Citizen Academy, she works as a self-defense instructor for the department, and she also assists with the Long Cadet Academy. So it's with privilege, if you could come down and get a mayor, we could present the Awkish Award to Jennifer Klenzick for dedication and hard work in the year of 2018. Congratulations, gentlemen. Please, you want to say something?
A few words, if you don't mind. Well, I mean, first, I just wanted to say thank you to the entire Police Department, because this was not a single effort by me at all. I can say with all certainty that every officer had a hand in raising the money, and even just, it was just a trying time for the department as a whole, so every officer stepped up to fill any gaps or any holes that we might have needed in any department, so it's kind of bittersweet to get this award this year, because I know every officer deserved it this year. So, and I want to thank them for helping me out with all of my events that I had this year. So, and also, just to get an award in Art Vish's name, I never had a chance to meet him. Sorry.
It's okay.
I understand he was an amazing guy, and when I first started, I was handed a pair of handcuffs that actually had his name labeled on the handcuffs, and I have not given them up since, so I hold that very dear to me, so I just want to say thank you. Honored.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
I don't know if I'm right, Chief, but I always heard because of her effort that the Lexington Police Department name moved up to the patch on, is that right?
I think that's where it's ever go, her determination, and I think we're going to get this, so.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you very much for doing that. At this time, I'll move into a vision plan update for January 2019. The Town of Lexington proudly presents Lexington Live Spring Concert Series at the Ice House Amphitheater. So save the date for Thursday evening, starting at 6:30. The first concert will be April 11th, and then April 18th, April 25th, May 2nd, May 9th, and May 16th. The full spring calendar, including the Lexington Live Artist, will be unveiled January 15th, so y'all stay tuned for that. I know you're excited to see that, so are we. For more information about the Ice House Amphitheater, please visit our website at icehouseamphitheater.com. The State of the Town, if you will join me and council February 4th, 2019, at 6:30 for our council meeting, as I deliver the State of the Town address acknowledging all of our major accomplishments in 2018 and announcing our very lofty goals for this year. You may also watch the address live from our Spectrum Station, 1301, or view replays at lexse.com. That is the vision plan update for January 2019. At this time, we'll move into a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. The Jenny Lane and I-20 exit ramp improvements are in progress, but we have been slowed due to significant rainfall recently. Night work is expected to resume over the next couple of weeks, installing new storm drain pipes across Jenny Lane. Continue to be aware of changing traffic patterns, congestion, and nighttime lane closures in this area. The South Church Street sidewalk is well underway, and we expect to make significant progress this month, weather permitting. This work stretches between Gibson Road and Woodland Drive. Be aware of traffic delays and lane closures around that area. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, January 9th, at 8:00 a.m. in the third-floor conference room, and if you're aware of any traffic issues, please call 358-7273.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Before moving into public hearings, I would like to recognize County Councilmember Darrell Hudson for being with us tonight. Thank you, Darrell. Appreciate you being here. Public hearings, speakers are limited to five minutes in our public hearings. The first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5422-02-006, located at 209 Parker Street. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4200-09-102, located at 255 Clearbrook Circle. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance to purchase property. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number four, final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric and gas franchise agreement with S C E N G. Anyone here wish to speak to that? And finally, item number five, final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric franchise agreement with M C E C. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number four, final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric and gas franchise agreement with S C E N G. Anyone here wish to speak to that? And finally, item number five, final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric franchise agreement with M C E C. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5422-02-006, located at 209 Parker Street. Councilmember Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Patrick Kane owns one acre located at 209 Parker Street and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential, and Parker Street is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Kathy makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4200-09-102, located at 255 Clearbrook Circle. Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Karen and Kevin Goby own one acre located on 255 Clearbrook Circle and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being built on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential two, and Clearbrook Circle is classified as a local road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and local road classification for Clearbrook Circle. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance to purchase property. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town council is asked to purchase a piece of property in Town Limits that consists of roughly three acres. Staff is asking for approval to pay up to $150,000. The property purchase is necessary to accommodate one of the town's upcoming road projects. The seller has requested to remain anonymous until the time of the deed transfer. I'd like to make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric and gas franchise agreement with S C E N G. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. S C E N G and M C E C recently enacted a new agreement on service area lines and have put that agreement into service. The town is required to enact new franchise agreements with the respective entities as a follow-up to that agreement. There are no other substantive changes to the agreements. I make a motion for final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric and gas franchise agreement with S C E N G.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes, second set motion. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Manus.
What about the changes? Are there changes just with SCANA or with the S C E N G also?
So you assume you mean the purchase of SCANA by Dominion?
Yes.
I was told that that really shouldn't matter for this, because they're taking ownership of all of their assets, essentially, so this would just be a transfer, just like a company got bought out, and you'd still have a lease with the person that owned the company, kind of thing. This is really just about the fact that they, for the first time, have created service areas that they really didn't have before, and both parties have agreed on them, and they've outlined those, and we've adopted those, as well as other jurisdictions, and so it's just an update of our existing franchise to indicate that we have that agreement, that this is their service area and this is theirs.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric franchise agreement with M C E C. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, as briefly just read, S E N G and Mid-Carolina Electric Cooperative recently enacted a new agreement on service lines and have put that agreement into service. The town's required to enact new franchise agreement with the respective entities as a follow-up to that agreement, and it's just like the other one, there are no other substantive changes to the agreements. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for final reading of an ordinance establishing a new electric franchise agreement with M C E C.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. This time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manus. First reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-026 and 048, located on Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Triplo LLC owns 38.75 acres on two parcels located on Cherokee Trail and has petitioned to annex a portion of the properties. The portions to be annexed consist of a sewer at Eastman that is being used as part of an 86-unit subdivision being constructed on Cherokee Trail. Properties in town near these properties are zoned high-density residential and protected residential. Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended protected residential two zoning for the property and local road classification for Cherokee Trail. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manus makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington, excuse me, annexing portions of Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-055 and 182, located on Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essex Land Development, Inc. owns 30.89 acres on two parcels located on Cherokee Trail and has petitioned to annex 30.42 acres of the property. Portions to be annexed are shown as tracks 1 and 2A on the attached survey. Essex Homes is constructing an 86-unit subdivision on the property. Properties in town near this property are zoned high-density residential and protected residential. Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended protected residential two zoning for this property and local road classification for Cherokee Trail. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second set motion. Any further discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Hanson.
Yes, Ms. Manus.
I didn't think you'd get by with that one tonight, did you? So, John, it says that they own 30.89 acres, but they're only annexing 30.42. Why not the whole thing?
There's a bit of a land swap going on between the developer and the owner that isn't completed yet. The portion that is not being annexed is on your aerial map, is the blue triangle that is actually across the road from the subdivision.
Hold that up one more time. Oh, I see it right here.
This section right here is not part of the subdivision, so they're swapping that with the landowner, with the landowner, and that hasn't been completed yet, so we're only annexing this and that one, which is where the subdivision will be.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Ms. Hanson, do we own, or is any of the property across the other side of that road in town already?
No, sir.
Any further discussion?
One more question. Has the, there's a site plan on here. Is that site plan going through Planning Commission?
It was a permitted project when it went to the Planning Commission beginning with, so they did not have to look at the site plan. But it is as close as you can get, if not completely meets our standards.
So they permitted it through the county and then brought it to the Planning Commission, so what variances do they have from what it would have looked like if it had been through the town? You say it's almost there. I'm just curious what the variances are.
I think it's pretty close, and maybe some slight differentiation in the amount of active green space that we would require that the county does.
Do they have sidewalks?
Have sidewalks.
It does have sidewalks.
Yes, it does.
Is it a lot of green space difference?
Probably not. I haven't calculated, but I don't think there is.
So why don't they go to county? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead, Ms. Manus.
Because it wasn't contiguous until we got the sewer on that you had as item one.
Any further discussion?
So, what variances do they have from what it would have looked like if it had been through the town? You say it's almost there. I'm just curious what the variances are.
I think it's pretty close. There may be some slight differentiation in the amount of active green space that we would require that the county does.
Do they have sidewalks?
It has sidewalks.
It does have sidewalks?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Is it a lot of green space difference?
Probably not. I haven't calculated it, but I'll put your answer.
So, why don't they get the county, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Ms. Manis.
Because it wasn't contiguous until we got the sewer on, that you had as item one.
Any further discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Carnes, a second by Mr. Lyle. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number three, first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-04-041, located at 4765 Sunset Boulevard. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joyce Harris owns 1.6 acres located at 4765 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. John Harris Body Shop is located on that site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. Make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second to that motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
Be recusing myself from this one, as John Harris is a direct competitor.
Very good. Mr. Baker recuses himself, and I believe Mr. Cunningham, he's filed the paperwork with you. Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5496-04-011, located at 133 Vera Road. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lone Wolf Properties LLC owns 1.33 acres located at 133 Vera Road and has petitioned to annex the property. A crane repair facility is being located on that site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial, and Vera Road is classified as a local road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their December meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Collins, second to that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That concludes our business for this evening. At this time, we will hear announcements from Mayor Pro-Town, Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope you and your family had a wonderful Christmas and are looking forward to 2019. The press release just went out this morning. Mayor Steve McDougall was named one of the most, 50 Most Influential People for the sixth year by Columbia Business Monthly Magazine. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
The town's traffic committee will meet this Wednesday, January 9th, at 8:00 a.m. in the third floor conference room. Town Hall will be closed Monday, January 21st, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet February the 7th at 5:30 in the council chambers. Council will meet again on Tuesday, January the 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. for the council work session in the Eli Mack Room. That's a change from Monday to Tuesday because of the holiday. The Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, January 23rd, at 8:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. The Fourth Annual Lexington County Chili Cookoff will be Sunday, January 27th, from 12:00 to 5:00 at the Ice House Amphitheater. The event is hosted by the Old Mill Brew Pub and the Lexington County Blowfish. Tickets are $10 for adults, 5 for kids, 12 and under. Tickets are available at the Blowfish on Main, online, or the morning of the event. Proceeds will benefit Lexington County first responders, responders, families in need. Don't forget to tune in to our next council meeting on February the 4th at 6:30, when Mayor McDougall will present the State of the Town. And thank you for watching your Town Council in action tonight, and we look forward to seeing you again in February.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro-Town. Any questions from the news media? I don't believe we have any with us tonight. Public comments? Are there any comments from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Anybody here wishing to speak on the agenda? We're glad to have you, Councilman. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting of the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, January 7th, 2019. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during the week, and the video will be available on the town's website at lexsc.com. On behalf, on behalf of Town Council, staff, and myself, I want to wish you all a very happy and healthy New Year. Without objection. Councilmember Williams makes a motion. We go back into executive session.
Second.
For the purpose, Mr. Williams?
For downtown economic development.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second to that motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are back in executive session.